Five thirty right now, we'll wait another minute or two.
Your, your, your new haircut? I think you went somewhere and said, make me look ten years younger.
I cut it myself.
Okay, hey.
Taking time. About to do it again, maybe next few weeks.
You, you could offer your services to other teammates, Dad. Outside, of course, right?
You don't want to go to the same place that Shane goes.
Yeah, I know. Or Dawn, for that matter. We got her as Dawn.
I, I will, my hair, if it's not cut right, will look even worse than it does long, so.
It doesn't look bad, it's just longer than you normally have it.
It's like at the, if it's not done right, I get the buckwheat look with it sticking straight up and.
That's great. All right, well, let's go ahead and get started. Thank you for joining us for today's town hall, July twenty-third, Thursday. Yesterday, we had a very lengthy council meeting. We started at five thirty and had a workshop, and it was the police policies and practices workshop. It went from five thirty to seven. It was a really good discussion. Chief Powell gave a very thorough presentation, followed up by questions from the council, input and engagement from the community. And that had followed two different town halls that we did that were focused on police, and those were done on June ninth and June eighteenth, and those were both recorded and available online. And then last night, just had quite a few agenda items. Everything from, from budget to more routine items as well. And so for tonight's town hall, I just wanted to provide a few updates related to the new orders and sort of some of the things that we're up to, and then just open it up for any questions or areas that our attendees wanted to hear more about. And so as it relates to COVID, since July twelfth, our county has been on the monitoring list for the state, which means that many indoor activities and industries are closed. And so all businesses, including those that operate solely outdoors, must continue to follow the requirements of the local order. And this includes creating and posting a social distancing protocol. We, the city, we've relaxed permitting requirements and have been encouraging businesses to move outside and, and to take use of the space outside. And this applies now to barber shops that are able to open. But as we understand it, it's for hair cuts, but not for full salon services. And then fitness facilities are able to open outdoors as well. And so I just want to encourage those that are on, as you're talking to your friends and associates, contact the city's economic development team if you want to talk about how businesses can move outside. I wanted to mention that this past Monday, our Centennial Recreation Center has moved outside, consistent with the orders. And our CRC teammates have been working really hard to offer everything from outdoor exercise classes, cardio equipment, free weights and weight machines in the parking lot. And you can visit the CRC website for all of the protocols and the procedures. And you sign up and you show up and you can be there for an hour, and it's working out really, really well. Our Aquatic Center continues to offer outdoor lap swim, aqua fitness, private swim lessons, and then we're going to be adding additional outdoor group exercise opportunities. The other news that came out recently was related to our schools. And the governor announced that any school, whether public or private, that is within a county that's on the monitoring list, that school cannot open up until the county is off of the monitoring list. Just before this, announced that they're going to be going to distance learning anyway. And so they've been hosting forums that, that for the community to go on to learn about what their reopening plan looks like. And, you know, from everything that we're hearing from the county, in Dr. Sarah Cody's words, is very sobering. I was just on a call yesterday, and our numbers are increasing. Our cases are increasing, hospitalizations are increasing. And so a lot of time was spent just talking about the messaging and the communications and making sure that we, as a city, are conveying that social distancing is critical, and especially face masks right now, or facial covering, to slow the spread of COVID and that we're going to be in this for a while, was the message. And, you know, they've, they've talked about their dashboards, more information is available online now, and about contact tracing, and there's a lot of information on their website as well about how that works. So that is what I wanted to just generally share. And so I'd like to just encourage the attendees, if they want to raise their hand, and ask any questions or any areas that they want to hear more about. I do have our teammates on, and they are a wealth of information on all of the different areas. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions or comment on any item that, that you have. And so I'm going to look at the chat, and there is a question that says, is there any plan to defund Morgan Hill E.D.? And so I will start, and then I will turn it over to Chief Powell to talk a little bit. And I think the definition of defund is different from, you know, depending on how it said, who, who, who is making that statement. But what I will say is that our council adopted our budget on June seventeenth. There were reductions in general that were made before a budget adoption related to COVID, but we did not, we did not reduce our police budget other than for COVID reductions. And last night, the chief went through what the police budget is made up of and so forth. And, and I think, I'm going to turn it over to chief, and chief's going to talk about how we're looking at our budget and our services and, and talking more about how we can partner even more with the county, even more with our housing group, to deliver services in a different way to just help what we're already doing. So chief, I'm going to turn it over to you for a moment, if you don't mind.
Yes. So we're really excited. The county has a grant, and they are in the process of finding two clinicians that are going to team up with our police officers to respond out to the field and help out with our homeless population, mental health needs, and youth suicide issues. The city is also looking at, well, the police department is looking at reallocating some funding from a vacancy police officer position to supplement that team with a civilian. And we're looking at funding from our housing department as well, so that way we could create a team of five or six people that will be able to respond out to these situations and be able to navigate county resources and provide long-term solutions to reduce the amount of time officers are spending on each of these situations and reduce the amount of time that we get called out to them, because the team would be proactive and make sure that the, the people in need were, they were proactively providing them services to avoid police response.
Thank you. So the next question is from Laura, has outdoor dining opened back up? I heard there were concerns recently with that, so it seems a bit vague. So a little bit of background, July fourth weekend, July third, as a matter of fact, which was a Friday, we had a visit from officers from the ABC, Alcoholic Beverage Control. And so they came into the city, and there's some confusion about who the officers were. And so later, we found out that they were in fact from the ABC, and they were part of a sort of state task force, letting restaurants know that they could not operate outdoors. And they handed out a, a paper just talking about orders. And so there was a lot of confusion, and they were telling customers, you can't be here, you can't eat. Some restaurants, they said, hey, you have to close down. Other restaurants, they said, okay, you can serve, but you can't be back open tomorrow. And so we were very confused, you know, one with ABC being here. Normally, they provide sort of no advanced notice of that they're going to be having compliance efforts so that we can help them get our businesses in compliance, whatever it might, with whatever it might be. And confused about why outdoor dining wouldn't be allowed. And so we found out that the county did not have the variance that it needed to be able to allow for outdoor dining. And so this, you know, on the news, and, and so in Morgan Hill was super confusing because we had this, you know, and so restaurants didn't know whether or not they could be open. Thankfully, it was resolved within a couple of days. And so I think by that Tuesday, the county had received the variance that it needed from the state to allow for the outdoor dining. And so to answer the question very directly, yes, outdoor dining is certainly allowed throughout Santa Clara County. And of course, indoor dining is not allowed yet in Santa Clara County. And then, you know, the other big change was, you know, the, with the city, with the county going on to the monitoring list, that changed personal services and gyms that were going to be able to open up indoors. And so that news, you know, we, we got it on, you know, I, I think, personal services were able to open on Monday, July thirteenth, and then by that afternoon, we knew that they would have to be shut down by Wednesday because we're on the monitoring list. So yes, enjoy our restaurant, please. Okay, so we have from Rick Kent, can you summarize the actions taken in last night's city council meeting relative to the budget? Absolutely. So last night, Datwin, our finance director, prepared and presented a report, and it had several items. And so it included our preliminary closeout of fiscal year nineteen twenty. And so that fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. And so we're, you know, in the process of closing the books, but we presented preliminary numbers last night. And so we gave the council and the community an update on how we are looking, both revenue and expenditure-wise. And so the, the big takeaway there is that for most categories, we're pretty spot on with where we thought we would be. And then some categories are a little bit better than we thought. In one specific area, development services, planning, building, engineering, all fall under development services, better than anticipated. And so there was that piece, and there was also the piece where we're now going to be providing the council updates on our budget for the two, two-year budget. So starting July first, that fiscal year, and next fiscal year. And so Dat presented the information, presented information about palpers, presented, presented basically that at this point in time, we believe our revenue estimate losses of seventeen point seven million are, it's still the accurate number. We don't have anything that tells us that it would be anything other than that. As part of the report, as part of the adoption of the budget on June seventeenth, part of the motion of adopting the operating budget, council asked us to bring back, what would an additional two hundred thousand dollars in potential budget reductions look like? And so our team, all departments, looked at what additional reductions would look like. And so we presented that information to the council, not just the, the amount and the department and the item, but if we were to reduce the budget by those amounts, what, you know, how would services be affected, you know, what would be the, the consequences of those items? No action was taken last night. We're going to be back to the council with, with an update soon on, you know, on our revenues and our expenditures for, for the two years. Dat, did I cover everything?
Yes, you were spot on, you covered everything.
Okay.
No action was taken last night by the council regarding budget.
Okay. We have another question from Josephine, why is this team of counselors responding to mental health needs of those expecting homelessness part of the police department? Okay. And, and so how I would respond to that is that it's not just the police department. So this, this, if we move forward with this, and this is something that's still in the exploratory phase, it's a multi-departmental effort. And so it's going to involve police, but it's also going to involve our housing team, and it's also going to involve the county. So it's not just driven by our police department. Anything else, team, on that?
Yes, the two clinicians that the county is assigning to the city of Morgan Hill is through a grant, and that, those positions are to supplement law enforcement or to be used as the city sees best fit for our community. And so right now, the police department has all the data regarding the calls for service and crisis issues. So by sharing that information and getting the clinicians directed to the people that need it is going to be probably a, a good starting point for us to start building and developing this team and see where it goes from there.
Thank you, chief. Okay, I'm looking at our chat, I don't see any questions. While we're waiting for any additional questions, tomorrow is going to be our mid-year goal review workshop with council, going to start at nine. And we do have the whole day slated and reserved for it, but I am anticipating that it could end by about twelve thirty. And so as far as topics go, we're going to review council's Sustainable More Than Hell document, and that's the document that contains our vision and our ongoing priorities, as well as our strategic priorities. And so we'll talk through that and see, kind of validate that those continue to be council's priorities as we move forward. And then we're going to spend some time looking at council policies and protocols. Council has established its own set of norms. And so the council will review those and make sure that they're still relevant, talk about how and if they're still being adhered to. And then we will transition to looking at the specific staff work plan, primarily in furtherance of council's strategic priorities. We've added a section that identifies work plan items that are really in response to our team efforts in COVID response. And so the council will look at that, and we'll highlight some of those and review that with the council and the community. And then, time permitting, we also have as part of our presentation, an overview of some of the significant project update, both development projects, as well as some of our own capital projects. And then we have council, council future agenda items that we have a list of, and so council will review those as well tomorrow. So please join us for that. Okay, anything else? Any questions? Chris, you want to just share a little bit more in addition to what I said about our CRC and our programs, get people excited about them?
Um, yeah, we're, we are really excited, but at the same time, safety is the biggest priority. So if you're coming back to the CRC or the Aquatic Center for classes or to workout, things are very, very different. And, and, you know, customer service is always our priority, but everything transaction-wise, you'll have to do online or over the phone, because we're trying to keep contact as low as possible. And then you'll see cleaning, 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 and sanitizing and disinfecting is a big, big priority. So, so while we are, we are, we hope everyone's excited. We do also understand that some people might not want to come back, so we still have the option for the virtual membership. So we just want to make sure that we're supporting everyone. When you do come, remember to bring your own water and those things, because we, per, per all the rules, we don't have water faucets that are shareable and all those sort of things. So it, it's quite a bit different. But the most exciting thing is just the excitement we see from people getting to come back and do things that they love and work out and take their classes and swim. And it's just great to see people being able to do that again and do some of the regular things they've been used to. So if you aren't a member, you will be, you can sign up, and it's all done online. But new members, we aren't, they aren't starting use until August first. And the reason for that is really safety as well, to make sure the procedures and everything are really well tuned before new people and more additional people get added. But we will process you and get, get you ready if you are a new member. So I'm super excited.
Great, thank you. Edith, would you talk just for a moment about our branding?
The, hi, the place branding program? Wonderful. So the city just launched one of the latest efforts to support businesses during COVID. The, one of the first efforts was to find a way to allow restaurants and retailers to push outdoors by using sidewalks and parking lots and parking spaces. And we moved really, really fast trying to, to get the K-Rail and the devices that would allow them to push out. The second phase of that program, as part of our, our economic recovery plan, is how do we help those businesses sustain the outdoor efforts? So one thing is how do they push out on an emergency, right? But then the second thing is how can they have staying power outdoors? Especially now that we know that being outdoors is probably going to be part of our long-term future. We need to make sure that this outdoor spaces have staying power. So to that extent, we launched a place branding program that would allow businesses to beautify their spaces, at the same time, partner with community members and artists and, and community groups to help create a, a better space. And, and the beauty of this program is that it does two things, actually three things. One, it supports businesses, which is the primary focus. Two, it brings the community to the fold so that they can work closely with the businesses. And three, it focuses the efforts on beautifying the outdoor space that anybody from the community can appreciate and enjoy. And they don't have to be a customer of that business to appreciate the beautification. So with that, the place branding program is available. It has very limited amount of funding, but it also provides an opportunity for the private sector to come in and provide donations, provide in-kind support, provide discounts. And we already have a couple of artists that have said, hey, we will donate our talent. If you have a wall that you want us to paint, we'll come out and paint it. We have another business that has said, hey, I have trees, and I'm happy to lend businesses trees to beautify their outdoor spaces. So this is, this is really need. More information, you can find it on, on our website.
Right.
Christina.
Yeah, thank you, Edith. So we have a question about nail salons. Is there any guidance on nail salons being able to provide work outside if haircuts can be done that way? What about the use of plexiglass shields? I've seen that in other states. Are you thinking, oh, so let's stop there, and then I'll do the rest of the question? So it is my understanding that the barbering cosmetology services can be offered outside, and there's guidelines, and I do believe that covers nails. Do you know offhand, Dawn, if that's accurate?
No, but I'm looking right now.
Okay, okay. So we'll, we'll follow up with that. The state has put out how it can be done outdoors, and I assume that that applies to Santa Clara County right now. So we'll, we'll follow up on that shortly. And then are you thinking about continuing the city meetings or town hall meetings online after the COVID situation has resolved? These town halls started shortly after we started the shelter in place, and the response from the community has really been great. And I, I think some would say we've never had as much engagement as we have now with our town halls and our council meetings, because it's a lot easier to engage this way. You know, you can do it from the comfort of your home, and it's just easier than, you know, coming to City Hall. It could be childcare issues, it could be people are housebound. And, and so we have really enjoyed the town halls, and I think people have as well. We've done them general like this, and then throughout the time, we've also had some specific ones around police and around Hale Avenue Extension and high-speed rail. And so I do see them continuing now, expanding that beyond town halls into council meetings. You know, I think that's sort of to be determined. You know, my guess is that we're going to be doing Zoom council meetings for quite a while. But once we return to, you know, back in, in gathering, you know, that, that could change. But I do appreciate the comment, because this person said that it's a much more inclusive approach for people who may be housebound. I heard there was a pop-up testing site at City Hall a while back. I haven't seen any in the city recently. Are they thinking of offering that again soon? And will the test be quicker now? My last one at CVS took twelve days to get the result. Okay, so the county is really, really trying to encourage people to get tested. As most people know, at the beginning, it was very difficult or impossible to get a test, a test unless you had symptoms or you were exposed to someone that had it or you were an essential worker. And now it is a lot more open to be able to do that. And yes, we did have one pop-up testing site where it was open to the public. It was at our city council chamber. We, in one day, did three hundred and thirty-five tests. And it's pretty remarkable, because we worked with a county, and this happened, and we put this in place in less than twenty-four hours, which I just think is super, super, super amazing, because sometimes, you know, you have stereotypes of government takes forever to do things. But you know what? That is not the case, and, and I want to say that's not the case with us and even our, in, in the county. So I, you know, somebody reached out from the county and said, hey, you know, we're, we want to do a testing site, and we jumped on it, got, got the right people in place and, and, and made it happen. And so we've been working very closely with the county, and we are looking at doing them more often. And we're looking as early as the beginning of August to do, the goal is to do a couple a month. The one that we had, you just showed up to, which is sort of like the pop-up testing that they're doing at Antonio del Bono in Gilroy. And while it's great, you don't have to have an appointment ahead of time, they were, the, the lines were just really long. I talked to some people that waited two and a half hours in line to get their test. And then the other good news is that the tests that were offered here are not the highly invasive tests that some of the sites have. They are a very short probe that goes into each, each, each side of your nose and just swabs it gently. So that is another positive. As far as the results and how long they take, that is something that we've been talking to the county about, and they assure us that the timelines are improving. Certainly with, when a person tests positive, they try to contact that person within twenty-four hours. It may take longer for a negative test. And, you know, they, they are improving. And so, let's see, it's Laura, you're mentioning CVS, and CVS, you know, separate from the county. But yeah, I mean, they have their own, their own standards and their own timeline. The county put out an order to really try to get increased testing within the county, and that would include all of the other hospitals, you know, to include Palo Alto Medical Foundation, to include Pfizer. So we're seeing a lot more tests. I think recent numbers that I, that I saw in some days, they have seven to eight thousand tests a day being performed. There has been some discussion of opening high school labs to facilitate quicker processing of COVID tests. Is there anything formal happening with that? Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, no, I, I haven't heard that. I, yeah, has anybody on this call heard about high school labs being used to process the test? No?
No, Christina, but Michelle here, if I could jump back. I know Christie and Rebecca have been working on scheduling some more tests, testing at City Hall. Christie does have some dates I can share. It's like they are scheduling testing at City Hall on August eleventh, August twenty-fifth, September eighth, and September twenty-second. It looks like it's going to be self-scheduled appointment testing, so it's not pop-up. But you, I'll get a little more information for her and jump back on about how folks can make appointments. Hopefully, if you can make them soon, you can get early in those dates.
Yeah, no, that's great. And, and the thought with these pop-up sites, as well as what we're proposing to do in conjunction with the county in August and September, this is for people that don't have symptoms. You know, they're still recommending or really. You know, they're still recommending or really wanting that if you have symptoms, you do it through your doctor, through the hospital. So, and I think that part of that is just quicker, quicker response time as well. Okay, I'm looking at Q and A.
Before we, you go on, Christina?
Yeah.
I was going to just report, I think the state has put out guidance on outdoor personal care services, which are distinguished from, from hair. That allow nail salons and massage.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I do know for sure the massage piece because I, I got that question and asked the county directly. And, and they did say, yes, massages can be offered outdoors. Okay, let's see here. We have Colin Bailey. I'd like to inquire about converting downtown Monterey to a pedestrian-only space or perhaps pedestrian on the east side of the median and cars on the west side of the median. I believe this would tremendously help all the downtown restaurants expand their outdoor seating safely in this pandemic. I know many, including myself, who don't currently feel safe going to restaurants downtown, but would if we could use the roadway for seating. We have beautiful weather here in Morgan Hill, absolutely. And I'd like to see us use these advantages to allow our downtown economy to thrive while keeping our citizens safe from COVID. So this is a topic that has been discussed a few different times. And as a matter of fact, we did provide a little bit of an update last night at the council meeting. And so I think I'm just turn it right over to you, Chris, to talk about what the council decided. And, and Edith, you can also pop in if you want to talk about the parklets and how restaurants are sort of spreading out.
Yeah, and so the council, the council has looked at this for many, many years, not necessarily going to taking one side of the road versus the, the other. There's some engineering issues with really making that work. That was, has been looked at before, but many, many years ago. But reducing the lanes to one lane each direction was specifically reviewed, as well as closing Monterey at different intervals for weekends, per se. Reducing to, to the one lane each direction configuration was not, not selected to be moved forward with by the council. And we've done trials on that in the past. And there's definitely pros and cons to, to going that direction. And there is definitely public opinion on both sides for that direction. What the council did direct us to do on our public spaces was to continue to work with the businesses individually. So we have, as Edith mentioned a few minutes ago, set up the, you'll see the orange water-filled K rail is what it's called, and that's extending restaurant space. And then Edith and the team in Development Services continues to work on the use of private space. And so we've been directed to continue doing that to, to help our, help our businesses, as well as potentially look at like one weekend closures. That, that piece was the council's still discussing. However, we have fiscal constraints with the city and using our limited dollars on that will have to be a decision that's made in the future.
Chris, we're just, we're going to turn it over to Edith now. She can talk a little bit about how we've worked with restaurants. And then what I want to do is turn it over to Dawn and potentially Chief to talk about what we're doing with complaints about customers not wearing masks and when questions like that come up. And, and then just, we can just bridge the topic of how do we help people feel safe going into our business? Okay, Edith.
Sure, thank you. Certainly, the topic of making downtown a more pedestrian-friendly district has been a, a part of the conversation in this community for many, many years. The, our main focus right now is assisting the restaurants expand and survive. And I think that we are achieving that with the parklets right now. So far, we are hearing that the space that has been created is, seems to be sufficient for the restaurants to be able to, to, to stay operational. I think that one of the challenges that we are seeing is that as customers are having to be a little bit closer to the road, you certainly feel the, the buses and people driving by fast. And certainly, I think that the conversation will continue. And it will continue to, to be part of the, the daily conversation for us. So I think that for us as a community, we just really need to help us understand what is it that we're trying to achieve? If, if the main and primary goal is to, to help the restaurants and the businesses survive and, and what have you, the Al Fresco program, I think is working and I think is sufficient for now. If the goal for us as a community is to make downtown the most pedestrian-friendly business district, then, then doing some sort of a, a complete streets program is the right thing. And I think the community, so far the council has said, let's continue the conversation. And I, I think that the council is at a minimum, ready to have that conversation down the road when the Hale Avenue completion of that project happens.
Great, thank you, Edith. Dawn and Chief Pausgroth talked to us about face coverings and what happens. What do businesses do when their customers don't wear masks? And what are, what, what do employers have to enforce, but don't they have to enforce?
I'll start at the, so under both the state and, well, under the state guidelines or the state orders, masks are required anytime you are around people who are not from your household and you can't stay outdoors for more than six feet apart. So if you're outdoors and you're more than six feet apart, that would be a time when you wouldn't necessarily need to wear a mask. But they're really asking people to wear masks anytime they're around people that are outside their immediate household. A mask doesn't have to be the surgical masks, the disposable surgical masks that you often see people wearing. It's really any kind of face covering that would prevent droplets from when you speak or, or cough from leaving your mouth and, and infecting someone else. You know, so it's as simple as a T-shirt, a cloth, a scarf. The most effective ones are the ones that are two ply, made from really light cloth. They're easy to breathe through and they're really effective at going droplets. Businesses under the county, both the county and the state order, are also required to wear their patrons to wear masks. They should have postings outside their business saying masks are required to come in the store. There is some conflicting guidance on what happens if you are one of the very few people that has a condition that prevents you from wearing a mask. Those businesses have an obligation to their customer or to their employees and their other customers to prevent infection to those, to their employees and other customers. So they're within their rights to say, to, to, to require you to wear a mask to come into their place of business, regardless of whether you have a condition. But they do have to offer alternatives. If you have a condition that you cannot wear a mask, then they should be offering alternatives. And I know, you know, there are some shops in downtown that will say, if you cannot wear a mask due to a medical condition, please wait here, ring the bell, we will come out and we'll engage with you outdoors, socially distanced. I mean, that's sort of how they, they do that. If a customer refuses to wear a mask, and this is where I'll turn it over to Chief Pausgroth. But if a customer refuses to wear a mask and it comes into the store, you can ask them to leave. If they don't leave, you can call the police and I'll turn it over to, to Chief to talk about what happens then.
Yeah, so the officers have been instructed to respond to those calls and diffuse the situation. We will do everything within our power to elicit cooperation from the patron at the store. If they don't want to mask up, then we will escort them out on behalf of the business. The business, they don't put on a mask, the business can be issued a citation and so can the patron. So it's, it's in the business's best interest to have them escorted out. And if they don't, then it'll be a trespassing charge. Usually, when we explain this to the person that doesn't want to wear the mask, they cooperate. So far, we've had 100% compliance and they willingly leave the store. We have not had to issue a citation for somebody refusing to leave a restaurant or store at this time, knock on wood.
We did hear when the ABC was here, not in Morgan Hill, but when they were doing their other visits, that they did issue citations to people in other cities that weren't wearing their masks.
And they did talk to a number of people in Morgan Hill that weren't wearing masks, that were not in a place of business, just on the street and asked them to put on masks. And I, as I understand it, the people did put on masks.
I, I was just going to add, Christina, that, you know, we get a lot of conversations from the business community and people that are visiting our businesses, again, on both sides, on, on to how they, the requirement, should they do it? What should people do? Should they turn businesses in? There is a process, as the chief mentioned, for that. But we try to convey to our, to our community that they have an opportunity to vote with their feet and vote with their wallet. You know, and we tell, you know, they, they, they have the option, obviously, to, to report a business and, and, and whether it's with the city or with the county, and a follow-up will happen. But the best thing is for people to, to make it known to the businesses, what is the expectation? We convey the same to our businesses, that it's, it's also, it is, it's a good business practice to, to, to show our community and our customers that we are safe and, and is the only way to be sustainable in the long run.
Thank you, Edith. Colin says, if I may provide some feedback, absolutely. Now's a good time to take bold experiments with the downtown section of Monterey as commuting traffic is way down. The conversion of downtown to a pedestrian-friendly space is an important action during the pandemic. And I'm not certain this lines up well in time with the Hale Extension timeline. Thank you for sharing that. Okay, any other questions, comments, areas that you would like us to cover? Not seeing anything. So what I'm going to do now is invite you to join us tomorrow, once again, nine o'clock. And you can go to our website, right, Michelle? And find the information to the Zoom information on how to get in. And there's all, there's also a, an email address that you can send any public comment to. If you're not able to attend but have comments. And with that, I want to thank you for joining us tonight. And Michelle, do you know offhand the next date on our calendar?
The next date is?
13th, August 13th, that sound right?
Yes, it should be the second Thursday.
Okay, so.
Before we sign off, I did acknowledge Laura's comment because I, I don't, I hope Shane saw it. She made a nice comment about our police department, so.
Oh, let me, let me grab it before we, is it in the chat?
It's in the chat.
Okay, from Laura. I've lived here for nearly 20 years and have noticed what a great relationship the police department has with the public. In light of what's going on in other locations, I wanted to thank the officers for their service and let them know they have our full support. Thank you, Laura, for sharing that. I, quite a few comments last night during our workshop, just about thanking our, our team. We, we have a great approach to policing. And last night, the chief talked about our community policing and building of relationships within our community. And we're super proud of, of all that we're doing. So Laura, thank you, and Dawn, thank you for noticing that. And I believe Michelle posted information on how to get onto the Zoom tomorrow. And then Laura says, okay, so Laura's question was how to get there. And so Michelle posted the link. So yeah. And in the chat, yeah, so the link for tomorrow. So please join us. And with that, good night and we'll talk with you later. Take care.
Thank you, Laura, and goodbye, everybody.
Bye.